12th, 2025 Meeting of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. If everyone would stand with us, please. Our Commissioner Chaplain Romell McMurray will lead us in our prayer and our pledge.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we stand before you to say thank you. We thank you, Lord, for providing for us as you always do. We thank you for protecting us from dangers, seen and unseen. Dear Lord, we want to stand here to give you all the glory and the praise. I ask that you heal our land from every corner within our county, our state, and our country, for we know that so much is going on and we need your fresh anointing to take a place all over this land. Even in dark times, we believe and trust that we will come out stronger and better than ever before. I pray for unity and peace amongst the people. Let us remember that no matter who we are, where we live, what we have, that we are nothing without you. So let us hold tight to your promises because we know that you are true to your word. As elected leaders, we thank you for giving us the task to help change the lives of others, for we know that we are on an assignment for a reason. It's my hope that others seize Christ in us as we help lead your people. I ask that you be with our military, our educators, and our first responders. Let them know that we stand for and we stand with them. And let them know to not get weary in well doing, for in due season they shall reap if they faint not. God, we thank you for your amazing grace. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Three vices of God keep them strong and never true. It is with pride and love that we salute the flag of Tennessee. You may be seated. While you are being seated, let me announce that our Rutherford County Register of Deeds, Dethor Harborn's sister has passed away, and you need to be in a prayerful mind for that family. This time, I'll call on our Rutherford County Clerk Lisa Crowell to call the roll.
Commissioner Oliver?
Present.
Commissioner Piercy?
Here.
Commissioner Rather?
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Davison?
Here.
Commissioner Beverly?
Here.
Commissioner Kusch?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner James?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Boyd?
Commissioner Paul Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Irvin?
Here.
Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Mr. Dodd?
Here.
Chairman Phillips?
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Here.
Commissioner McMurray?
Here.
Commissioner Gooch?
Here.
Commissioner Serenio?
Yeah.
We have a quorum, 20 present.
Thank you, Lisa. I'll mention that Carl Boyd is not here tonight. He's on a family vacation in Alaska, and we're kind of envious of that, but have a good time, Carl. Item E, I'm sorry, item D, reading and approvals of our May Commission minutes. I'll call on our Chairman Pro Tem Trey Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. I have read the minutes and inspected those. Everything is in order, so I'll move that we dispense with the reading and accept those as presented, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion and a second to approve our May 15th meeting minutes. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. This time, we have a very special recognition, and I'll also call on Chairman Pro Tem Trey Gooch.
I'm going to ask Senator Reeves and Representative Stevens to... Mr. Chair and colleagues, as you know, we've been trying to think outside the box to find alternative revenue for Rutherford County in lieu of increasing property taxes in the future. And so a citizen gave an idea to Representative Stevens, I believe, and he ran with it along with Senator Reeves, and the whole of our delegation supported them, and this legislation passed. And what's in the legislation is in this resolution I'm about to read. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners would like to recognize and celebrate those individuals who made a profound impact on the people and communities of Rutherford County, and whereas Representative Robert Stevens and Senator Shane Reeves, along with the entire Rutherford County delegation, for their efforts on House Bill 780 and Senate Bill 875 that is now public, Chapter 501. And whereas this innovative approach spearheaded by Representative Stevens modernized population estimates to an annual basis by using data from the University of Tennessee, and these population estimates are used for local governments in revenue distribution for sales tax, sports waging, gas tax, alcohol beverage tax, and others. And whereas before this update to the law, cities and counties would have to go through the effort and expense of a special census to have their population officially updated. And whereas growing communities like ours, most affected by growing population numbers, and this update will ensure that citizens in counties annually will receive the intended amount of revenue to provide services and projects, and now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on this 12th day of June 2025, does hereby extend our sincere appreciation to the entire Rutherford County delegation for sponsoring and supporting this bill, and especially to Representative Stevens for his tenacity in getting it accomplished. I so move, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Motion passes.
When I first got into politics in 2010, I learned very quickly that the best ideas come from people back at home. And this idea for House Bill 780 came from Smyrna's new town manager, Dave Santucci, who had recently moved to Smyrna from Florida. He asked me, why in the world do we have to wait 10 years to update our revenue sharing? And I said, I don't know. I'll look into it, and that's just what the law said. So we came up with a bill based on how Florida does their revenue sharing, and after many meetings with other representatives and senators, we were able to get this thing across the finish line. It was very smooth up until the last little bit, and we did have some hiccups, but thankfully we were able to work through those. We have to look for alternative sources of revenue besides property taxes, and this is one that's going to greatly benefit Rutherford County. It's going to bring in millions and millions of dollars to our county and cities each year with our growth, and that's going to be money that we don't have to have from property taxes or wheel tax increases. And I do want to thank Wildonami and all of the other cities and counties who had their lobbyists working on this, too. This was a mass effort, and we couldn't have done it without all of the support. When everybody is working together, we can actually get some things done. So I'm very excited about it and was glad to sponsor that and look forward to what we can do together in the future.
Thank you, Representative Stevens. I appreciate the opportunity to carry this bill with you. Commissioners, I appreciate the recognition tonight. I've been honored to be a state senator in this county that I love for six years. Hard to believe it's been that long. Some of the best advice I got as soon as I got elected was, Shane, as long as you always vote your conscience and you vote for your district, you'll come out on top. This piece of legislation is not a real big deal to a lot of counties around the state, but it's a big deal to Rutherford County. We have unique issues in this community. When I'm in Nashville and I'm talking to my colleagues in the Senate, and I'm telling you, Rutherford County's got some unique things going on that we're not dealing with in other places around the state. It's hard for them to believe the growth we've got here. With 80,000 people a year moving to our state, I think a third of them are moving here. So because of that, it just causes some extra needs like this. So I'm honored to have carried this bill with Representative Stevens, and by all means, if I can ever be able to service again, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert, and thank you, Shane, for taking time out of your evening to come and spend with us. You are appreciated. Item F, we also have two very special resolutions, and I'll call on Commissioner Pettis Reed.
Absolutely. These are two very special resolutions, and I'm going to ask that the Eagleville, Lady Eagles come forward at this time with her coaches, and ask the principal come forward, and I'll ask that the Eagles come forward at this time, too. I want the boys' team and the girls' team up here, too, that we have with us tonight. And there's a reason I ask that both of these teams come up here at the same time, because during this whole season, they have supported each other. They've been a vital part of taking the situation at hand of being behind every one of them. In fact, as the girls were about ready to win the game to go on to the state contest, the boys had just won to go on to the state contest, and they had won it in a, I'll tell you what, it'd come out of nowhere, and how they won that game to get on to the state contest, all of a sudden, they showed up at the girls' game right there, standing there to support them. So I wanted both of them here for you to see these two teams. It's amazing that coming from that community school is what you see there, and from that community who, whenever they go to these games, basketball games or whatever, they just make sure the last person out of Eagleville turns off all the lights and gets them going, because they're very supportive of what happens there. And this is not the first time we've had the Lady Eagles up here. This is the second time, and I think in four years, that they've won the championship game. And it's something to be very proud of, that that school has done that. Now, this group over here, they have won one state championship, two state championships, three state championships. This is their fourth state championship that they've been up here. And I don't know how many of you have seen that, but they are tied for the record of holding the most state championships, and it's something to be very proud of. I'll read these resolutions. We'll begin with the Lady Eagles Resolution of Resolution for the 2025 Eagle High School Girls Softball Team. Whereas the 2025 Eagle High School Girls Softball Team have once again made school history winning the program's second state championship by defeating Hollerock Brewston in the TSSAA Division 1A State Championship Game with a score of eight to one and an overall season record of 25 to five. The Lady Eagles did not allow a single run in postseason. During their run for the championship, they outscored their opponents 116 to three. Whereas the Eagleville Girls Softball Team members are Renley Bane, Braylee Bane, Remley Cook, Riley Cook, Cheyenne Cook, Kate Darnell, Madison Davenport, Marilyn Flutie, Peyton Garner, Presley Garner, Kara Grimes, Ashley Harrington, Presley Holland, Madison Hendrick, Presley Knowles, Addison Linton, Addison Martin, Ally Nugent, Anne Marie Oliver, Lily Scapegoat, Audrey Tibbs, Ashton Walker, Riley Ward-Britten, Jamie Ray, and Managers Aubrey Merritt and A.V. Armstrong. Whereas this has been a season to remember in the Eagleville community, and special recognition is due to Coach Chad Lehman, Assistant Coach Tommy Bane, Chris Ellis, Kim Ward-Britten, and Brandon Witt, Trainer Kevin Wolf, and along with Principal Tim Pettigo, plus the school staff for their dedication and committed, made this championship possible as well as encouraging good sportsmanship and inspired team play. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to the 2025 Eagleville High School Girls Softball Team, Managers and Coach for their successful team, resolved this 12th day of June 2025. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Motion passes.
I'm going to ask that Coach Lehman come forward, and I'll present you the resolution. This is only not the coach of the team, but the mayor of Eagleville. Now, I don't know how many of you have the coach and the mayor as the same person here tonight, but I think it's quite outstanding for that city there. I don't know which one to call you, coach or mayor. I call you friend. That's what I'll call you. Anything you'd like to say?
I'd like to say something real quick. I just want to speak on behalf of the city as well. Like he said, they have each other's back in everything they do. This school is very important to our community. It's a K-12 environment where we're always with each other. Like I said, a family environment, and you know, you just can't beat it. And that's what we enjoy, and we thank y'all for always supporting us in what we do, because without y'all and without funding, our dream is not a reality out there. So we do appreciate y'all doing that for us, and thank you for all you do as far as helping us in the city of Eagleville as well. Thank you.
You know, I think it's just amazing that Coach Bassham found so many young men with blonde hair out there at Eagleville. It's just quite interesting there. But other day, as I was writing this resolution, I happened to have a copy of the roster from '24, and I had your roster for this team, and it was almost a totally new roster when I looked at it. And that's amazing, too, that he can start over with a whole different team. Now, he did have a lot of seniors that were still there, and you've got seniors here that do not know what it means to lose. They've been here before you four times already in a row, which is something outstanding, and I think that's pretty good. You also have the runner-up to Mr. Baseball that has done an outstanding job, too, that comes from the Eagleville School. I'll read the resolution. Resolution of recognition to the 2025 Eagleville High School Boys Baseball Team, whereas many times the community of Eagleville has been described by their county commissioner as the diamond in the sky on the county's horizon. The Eagleville High School Baseball Team has proven that no one comes into their town and tries to mess with their diamond, their baseball diamond, that is. Just three years ago, in the month of August, the Rutherford County Commission recognized the Eagleville High School Baseball Team for winning their first-ever state championship that Eagleville had ever won in the school's history. Once again, we now recognize this determined group of baseball players for yet another Class 1A championship and taking home another TSSAA honor for the fourth year in a row, tying a state record for championship title wins. And whereas these young champions entered the championship game pulling out all stops, just as they did in the game to win the chance to play for the big trophy, the Eagles used a seventh-ending hero's effort to win the state title. And whereas the Eagleville Boys Baseball Team, whereas members are Maddox Boland, Brady Burns, Marshall Spann, Colt Bassham, Elijah Watkins, Bryson Berks, Tucker McClary, Brody Gleason, Jacob Sweetie, Mason Spears, Alex Bryan, Adrian Severi, Sam Dodd, Michael Severi, J.R. Duke, Carson Knowles, Carter Blair, Spencer Robbins, Brody Range, Bryson Edging, and Dreyfus Reminski. And whereas this has been another season to remember in the Eagleville community, and special recognition is due to Coach Brandon Bassham, Assistant Todd Williamson, Tanner Mabry, Trainer Kevin Wolf, Managers Hunter Sweeney, Landon Craddock, along with Principal Tim Pettigo, Assistant Principal and A.D. Jason Brown, and the school staff for their dedication and commitment which makes this championship possible as well as encouraging good sportsmanship and inspired play. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that we extend this resolution of recognition to the 2025 Eagleville High School Boys Baseball Team, Coaches and Fans for their successful year in achieving the TSSAA Division 1A Honor of State Champions for 2025, resolved this 12th day of June 2025. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Motion passes.
Again, thank you for having us, and thank you for all you do. I think it was a year ago, Commissioner Reed, when I left, said, see you next year, and I kind of shook my head and laughed and thought, I'm not sure about that. Well, these guys were sure about that. And you know, I can talk about them for a long time, and I know you've got a meeting to get to, but as he said, the 43-0 postseason record's phenomenal. I don't think any of these seniors have ever been to the office for anything other than a positive discussion. So I could go on and on about them. I said, one of the most impressive things, for sure, as we trailed East Robertson 12 to six in the seventh inning, and then 12 to eight with two outs, and just would not, I mean, the term refused to lose. These guys just would not lose. And we went 13 to 12, and pandemonium's going on, and I think Colt is the first one to ask me. He said, you know, Dad, can we get to the softball game? And my first thought, I said, what's the score? What inning? I think he said like seven to one in the third, and of course, the dad instinct and coach instincts, like, you know, you guys are going to rush, and please be careful if there's tickets out there somewhere. I don't know about them, so I think they got there safely and without a ticket, but I mean, that was their mindset as soon as we won, you know, to go support these girls. I don't know if you guys have seen it, but there's a photo of the girls rushing the field to get the championship trophy, and a lot of my guys were on the dugout behind them. It's a pretty phenomenal picture, and if there's a photo that describes Eagleville, it's that photo. But again, these guys just continue to believe, continue to do everything we ask them. As Commissioner Reed said, we had 27 guys on the roster last year. We graduated six, all seniors, all starters. These guys filled in. We had 22 guys on the roster. There's the 21 guys that were there last year and one freshman that we brought up, and they just continue to fill in spots and be remarkable. Again, I could talk a long time about them, and just so much good to say. But again, thank you for having us. Thank you to them, and again, congratulations to Coach Lehman and the girls as well. Thank you.
Coaches, principal, we'll see you here next year.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate you. Good job. Thank you. Item H, resolution of appreciation. I'll call on Rutherford County Mayor Joe Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sure this is going to be the shortest resolution because of who it's recognizing. He doesn't like to speak much, but as you know, the transfer station's been in the public eye for a lot of different reasons, and generally, all of them good. And this has been a $20 million project at this county through the cooperation, especially of the Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Johnson and the Property Management Committee chaired by Alan McAdoo, as well as a number of departments, including Adam Dodd's Maintenance Department. But in particular tonight, tonight's resolution is to recognize and honor Greg Brooks and the road board, and the road board, excuse me, the road department's contributions to what we've been able to achieve out there in saving the county over $3 million, back to the county. And Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to ask Mr. Brooks and his team to come up for just a few minutes, please. Greg, that's when you and your guys come on up here. I thought this was going to be quick. As the commission knows, Greg doesn't like a lot of attention, so make it painful for him if you don't mind. I think the IT department, Mr. Chairman, has a short video for us, so if the IT is paying attention, I would appreciate that video. Oh, good. That's the first time I've seen the video, and I will tell you, yes, thank you. Congratulations to the IT department, the GIS department, for putting that together. Quite honestly, the video doesn't do it justice. As the Purchasing Committee will know, when we opened the bids, the bids for doing the roadwork ranged between anywhere of $7 to $8 to $14 to $15 million. And quite honestly, that blew our budget pretty much out of the water. Greg looked at me and said, Mayor, I think we can do as good and a whole lot cheaper. And so Greg then started work with the Purchasing Committee, Property, excuse me, Property Management Committee, Public Works Committee, and the mayor's office to put a solution together that was as good, if not better, at a much reduced price. And that's what he did, and it literally saved the county millions of dollars. And it's a testimony to the talent that is in this county to get jobs done. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to read the resolution. Whereas road construction began on October 28, 2024, for the Rutherford County Transfer Station Road Project, and whereas the road construction project was completed on March 20, '25, with just under 1.5 miles of the road improved, and whereas it is estimated the cost savings to date is $5.7 million, saving Rutherford County taxpayers a considerable amount of money. Whereas all of Rutherford County Highway Department contributed to the completion of the Transfer Station Road Project, and whereas a dedicated team of eight worked on the project daily, including Thomas LeVorn, Kath Carrie Henderson, Jody Campbell, Roy Davenport, Robert Robertson, Mark West, Alan Pack, and Dwayne Cawthorn, also supported by the paving crew and the trucking crew as needed. Whereas the Highway Department acknowledges that Middleton's electric was cooperative in quickly relocating five utility poles to assist in the road compressment project. I want to stop here, and so that was because of the direct intervention by our Road Superintendent, Greg Brooks. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners and Mayor Joe Carr, is at its regular session on this 12th day of June 2025, does hereby extend its sincere appreciation to Superintendent Greg Brooks and the entire Rutherford County Highway Department, Public Works, for their dedicated service to Rutherford County and its citizens, resolved this 12th day, June 2025. Mr. Chairman, I can't move, but I would appreciate a motion and a second.
No move. We have a motion and a second by most of our commissioners. All those in favor, please say aye. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like Greg Brooks to speak for just a couple of minutes and introduce his team, please, sir.
Absolutely. First of all, thank you for the recognition and the acknowledgement, and I do appreciate that, and it's nice to be, you know, it's nice to be noticed. And I do feel like that we are, it is our responsibility to do as much to keep our taxes as low as we can. I do believe that. And I feel like this transfer station, obviously, you know, it's infrastructure, and supporting the infrastructure in this county is obviously what the Highway Department, Public Works Department should be doing. I also want to say a couple of things before I introduce everybody. I'm always humbled to come into this room because of all the things that I know have happened here for the last hundreds of years. And we need to keep aside of where we're at and what we're doing. We're just a small part of what's going on here. And also, I want to say that...
And also, I want to say that something that's been going through my mind all, all day today is, you know, if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. So let's all try to be part of the solution. That being said, I'd like to introduce my team. This is Thomas Laverne. He is our project manager at Highway Department. He, most of these, most of these men you see before you also worked on the Plainview project. So this, this is the second time they've been up here and it is a considerable savings to the county. This is Mr. Thomas Laverne. He's our, he's our project manager. This is Carrie Henderson. He, he is the Public Works Foreman and also one of the best equipment operators I've ever seen. This is Dwayne Cawthorn. He, he's on our Bushog team, but he stood out there with us all winter and, and helped us flag traffic. And I know you'd think, "Well, that's not," it's probably the hardest job out there.
It is a big deal.
And it's cold out there on that hill, too. But Jody Campbell, that's the equipment operator, truck driver, Robert Stevens, Robert Robertson, he's an equipment operator, truck driver, whatever we need him to do. And Mr. Alan Pack also supports in, in trucking. And these are just a few of the people that it took to get this job done. The entire highway, the entire Highway Department was involved in this, whether it be the administration of the Highway Department, Ms. Mary, Ms. Melissa, couldn't have done it without them. The paving crew, you know, they, we have the best, we're turning out the best work, our paving crew is turning out the best work of any paving crew in this county. I mean, there, there's nobody that can equal us. And I know because my bar is very high. And there's no construction company, no, no paving crew that, that can touch what we do. And our paving foreman, Mr. Levi Smotherman, is 30? He's a young man. He's been with us, you know, for several years and he's worked his way up. And he leads a team of 12, probably, every day. And I, rarely does he need anything from me except, "Where am I going next?" And that's impressive, you know? And our, our trucking crew, most of those guys have been with us for a long time, but it, it is, it is a joint effort, just like someone said up here a few minutes ago, that there's absolutely no way we, we could have done it alone. And I would not have even considered undertaking it had it not been for these, these gentlemen right here. Because I, I know that they can do it. They rarely need my help. They just need me to tell them, you know, what we're going to try to do and they'll figure out how to do it. And it's, it's an impressive bunch of people I get to work with out there. It really is. So that's, that's all I have about that. I, you know, like I said, if you're not part of the solution, you're, you're part of the problem. And I think we all need to think about what we're here to do and figure out the best path forward for everybody. I know we all have some personal agendas and that kind of thing, and that's good. That's what, that's, that's why, you know, a collection of people with ideas that want to get to the same place, that's how we wound up with a transfer station. And so that's, that's all I've got.
While Greg and his team is leaving, I've always looked at a performance indicator as a department or a company's commitment to safety. This group is committed to a safe work environment. They have not had an accident in my memory. And it's an outstanding performance. So thank you for your dedication to Rutherford County. Item I, introduction of Sidney Butterfield as our new Rutherford County Health Department Director. I'll call on our Chairman of Health and Ed, Phil Dodd. I meant to say this before we get started. Our public hearings are on our calendar for 6:30, but we will delay that until we get through this first part of our agenda.
Thank you, Chairman. I do have the privilege of introducing Sidney Butterfield as the new Director of the Health Department. And before I acknowledge that, I do want to say that Director Byron Cumby has joined us tonight. So I did want, I didn't want to embarrass him and call him up here, but I do want to call you out and just acknowledge that he's present and thank you for your leadership that, that helped set a tone for Ms. Butterfield. Thank you, Byron. Sidney comes to us from Southern Illinois, where her family still resides. She came into Tennessee for various reasons, but I know she came in to get a Master's of Public Health from ETSU. And so came into ETSU and stayed in Washington County as the Director of Health Department there for 16 years?
No, I wasn't.
Two years, two years. Lord, she's only 16! Spent some time in Washington County and Director of two years. Prior to that, she was with the Northeast Regional Assessment and Planning Coordinator. And this is going to stay kind of brief, but, but she just wanted to do a brief bio. And she concludes with saying she's glad to be in Middle Tennessee and Rutherford County. So I want to introduce to you Ms. Sidney Butterfield, the Director of the Rutherford County Health Department.
Hi, everyone. I'm very excited to be a part of the team that gets to serve Rutherford County. Byron left the Health Department in very good shape, and I'm so grateful for that and excited to see where we can go next. So if there's anything that we can do, I'm open to new ideas in ways that we can impact this community and have positive results. Thanks.
Thank you, Sidney. Thank you, Sidney. We look forward to working with you. This time, we'll jump down to item O on our agenda for our public hearings. I'll call on our Planning Director Doug Demossi to carry us through that. While Doug is coming up, item K on our agenda, public comments. We have no one had signed up. I'll also announce that item J has been pulled from the agenda. There was a, a conflict. That'll be done at a later date.
Sorry. No worries. Good evening, Commissioners, everybody. Hope everybody's doing well tonight. I've got four public hearings for your consideration tonight. The first is by Joe Swanson Jr. This is for Swanson Development located along Elam Road. The existing zoning is residential medium density. The proposed zoning is employment and activity center, EAC. Size of the site is approximately 10 acres. As I stated, the applicant is proposing to rezone this property. You will have a concept plan on your iPads with your agenda packets. You'll see that concept plan does show three buildings. The buildings have an approximate building area of a little over 70,400 square feet. This is not a planned development, so the concept plan is not binding, but it gives you an idea of the direction they're looking to go for this development. Directly from their application, it states the front building is anticipated for flex space, which can be a wide range of uses, ranging from trades offices to a dance studio. The rear buildings, excuse me, are anticipated to be more warehouse in nature. During the pre-application meeting we had for this request, the applicant's representative asked about applying for the EAC district. This district is typically reserved for employment areas or activity areas as identified under the comprehensive plan. However, there's nothing that says it can't be applied in other areas, especially areas that closely mimic employment areas such as interstate interchanges. And this is very close to the interchange at I-24 and Joby Jackson. There's also some other EAC-zoned area, property in the area as well. This concept plan does show access points or an access point that lines up closely with one of the drives to the church directly across Elam Road. We haven't required a traffic study at this point. That's just because of the uses. We're not quite sure what they're going to be yet, neither does the applicant. So at some point, if they do submit a site plan, we can require one at that time. An engineered site plan would have to be submitted for our consideration, which would demonstrate compliance with our access and parking requirements, our landscape buffers, and also our performance standards would also have to apply. One of the planning commissioners during the meeting had concerns about traffic along Elam Road, although they did feel that the request was appropriate as far as the land use was concerned. There was one person that spoke during the public hearing that did reiterate the traffic concerns for Elam Road. Again, like I said a little earlier, when we get a better idea of the uses, if this is approved, they will have to submit an engineered site plan, at which time we can require a traffic study. Following the public hearing, the planning commission asked some questions about a potential cemetery on the property and how things should move forward. I will just give a brief update on that. Long story short, our current, our county archivist, Dr. John Lodel, went out to the property and did some research on it. Turns out the graves that were a part of that cemetery have been moved actually to the city cemetery here, just right down the street on Vine Street. Wasn't sure exactly when, but he said that those graves had been moved. But he appreciated the fact that we had flagged that and let him know about it. Following that discussion, the planning commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Demossi? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing open for rezoning request REZ-25-008 for Swanson Development located along Elam Road. The existing zoning is residential medium density. The proposed is employment and activity center. The size of the site is approximately 10 acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner McAdoo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have had a lot of activity in this area, as you know, and everything is going good. Commissioner Beverly, I, I thought he would be up there to help me on this from, since he across the street, but I didn't see him, so. But in other words, I make a motion that this be approved.
We have a motion and a second to approve item REZ-25-008. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Mr. Demossi.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Our second request is rezoning REZ-25-009. This is for Hollings Head Development located along Hickory Grove Road. The existing zoning is RM, again, residential medium density, and they are asking for light industrial zoning, or LI. The size of this property is about five acres. This matter was referred to our office by our county's zoning enforcement folks. The applicant is, again, proposing to rezone this property to light industrial in order to use the property for a parking and storage facility for building materials. You'll see that there is a concept plan that is in your application materials on your iPads. The property has already been developed with the building and the parking area that you're seeing on that concept plan. Just so you know, the applicant has been put on notice that even if this request is approved, an engineered site plan will be, need to be submitted to staff and for a planning commission review and approval as well. And changes may be necessary depending on that staff review. But you will see that the plan shows about a 4,000 square foot building along with some concrete parking maneuvering areas. They also indicated that there would be some exterior storage of materials and vehicles, although they don't show that on the concept plan. Again, we'll want to see that on the site plan. This property will continue to have access to Hickory Grove Road. We do show access on one side of the property already. We would want to see a sightline study to make sure that that access is going to be safe. So again, that's something that we may have to look at possibly changing. Landscaping, of course, properties zoned light industrial are considered to be high impact and do require a type 3 buffer adjacent to any residentially zoned property. They can use existing plantings for that. All these things, again, would be taken care of, looking at an engineered site plan that would be submitted to our office, once again, if this application should be approved. The planning commission did have some concerns about this property, primarily about it being developed without permits or requesting proper zoning. Most of the discussion concerned the steps the applicant would need to take should the property be rezoned to bring it into compliance with our regulations. And I'll reiterate, we did say that if this is rezoned, we would have to see an engineered plan, so the applicant's well aware of that. So following this discussion, the planning commission did recommend approval by a vote of 5, 4, and 3 against. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Demossi at this time?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Oliver, I believe, was first.
Yes. Could you repeat why those that voted against this, what their, what their reasoning?
Well, I, as far as their exact reason, I don't think they reiterated so much during the meeting. I think a lot of it just had to do with the fact that they were a little disappointed in the fact that the applicant built the building and did everything that they did prior to actually getting zoning approval or any building permits. I think that was a lot of it, as I mean.
Commissioner James.
That was my question, was how long were they already out of compliance before we found that?
I don't have an exact answer to that. It was several months before we knew anything about it.
And what kind of penalty is there for when they go out of sequence like that for, "Go ahead and develop without," is there anything? Or is it just you just have to go through the procedures at that point?
Well, the first thing, of course, like I said, they'll have to submit an engineered plan to our office. Depending on what we find out of that plan, there may have to be site improvements that need to be made or things that have to be adjusted versus the way they currently are because they're not built to our standards. That's a lot easier to do the first time than it is to retrofit. So it's going to be a financial situation at that point. The county building codes office also has the ability to issue double permit fees for projects that progress without obtaining building permits when they should have. So that's also on the table.
Other questions for Mr. Demossi? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing open for rezoning request REZ-25-009. Hollings Head Development located along Hickory Grove Road. Existing zoning is RM residential medium density. The proposed zoning is light industrial. Size of the site is approximately five acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Michael Rather, Commissioner Rather.
Chairman, I've received zero calls, emails, and I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve rezoning request REZ-25-009. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Mr. Demossi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our third item is REZ-25-011. This is Matt Hamilton with Reagan Smith located at 4610 Sulphur Springs Road. The existing zoning is, again, RM residential medium density, and they are looking for commercial services zoning, CS, on a site that is also about 10 acres in size. According to information provided by the applicant, this development will consist of about 302 self-storage units, both enclosed storage and outdoor storage units, with options for both covered and uncovered. The site will be fenced with gated access, surveillance, and onsite management. The existing house on the property will be converted for office use, and you can refer to the applicant's letter in your agenda pack, on your agenda packets, which are, again, on your iPads. There is a concept plan, a series of them, showing the proposed layout of this development. Again, this is not a planned development, but it does give you an idea of what they would like to do moving forward. The total area of proposed non-climate controlled buildings is a little over 400, excuse me, 46,750 square feet in that area. Buildings are positioned closer to Sulphur Springs Road with boat and RV storage in the back of the property. Many warehouses, just so you know, are only allowed by special exception in the commercial services zone. The applicant is aware of this, and if this should be approved, they would have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for special exception approval for this proposed use. So what I'm trying to say here is that approval of the zoning does not approve the use of the many warehouses. So just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. This property does have frontage along Sulphur Springs Road and also a little bit of frontage on Hickory Road. We did express concerns about having any direct access on the Hickory Road, although we might be okay with some emergency-only access. But the concept plan that you have on your iPads does show access only onto Sulphur Springs. Again, as with the other applications, they will have to submit an engineered site plan prior to any of this development on this property regardless of the use. And they'll have to demonstrate compliance with all of our regulations, both the access and parking, also our landscaping. This would be a type 2 buffer type use adjacent to residentially zoned areas and also our performance standards. The planning commission did express some concerns with traffic along Sulphur Springs Road. Similar, as we discussed a little earlier, we do have the ability to require a traffic study prior to site plan approval until we really have a better idea of the use. They may say right now that, yes, we want to do self-storage. That could change over time. We also did express concerns about flooding and sinkholes in the area, which the applicant would have to design around should the application be approved. One person did speak during the public hearing reiterating many of these same concerns. I believe they live on Hickory Road. Following this public hearing and further discussion, the planning commission did recommend approval of this request by a unanimous vote. And again, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Mr. Demossi at this time? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing open for rezoning request REZ-25-011. Matt Hamilton, Reagan Smith, and John Chouaz located at 4610 Sulphur Springs Road. Existing zoning is residential medium density. Existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is commercial services. The size of the site is approximately 10 acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Rather.
Again, I've received no calls. I know where this property is, and I move for approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve rezoning request REZ 25-011. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our final public hearing tonight is REZ 25-005. This is also a Swanson Development project located along Manchester Pike. Existing zoning, as with the others, is medium-density residential, RM. They are asking for kind of a two-part request here. Plan unit development for industrial uses and commercial general for more commercial-type uses, and I'll get into that here in just a moment. They are requesting rezoning of this property to create what they call Buchanan Business Park, and as I stated, there are two parts to this request. About 12 and 1/2 acres along Manchester Pike would be zoned to commercial general. The remaining 92 and 1/2 acres would be for plan unit development, again, for industrial uses. This development will allow for the creation of multiple warehouse distribution buildings to meet the needs of local, regional, and national businesses located in and around the county. This rezoning would also create commercial properties along the eastern frontage of Manchester Pike for future commercial, retail, and office sites for businesses, again, both locally and from around the country. This concept plan can be found on your pattern book. The pattern book is on your iPads. You can see the concept plan in there. The plan shows approximately 644,000 square feet in nine buildings of warehouse distribution space. The applicant is providing some flexibility for these building sizes with the total building area not to exceed 700,000 square feet, so the footprints of the buildings that you're seeing on that pattern book may not be exact, but the square footages won't vary much from what you see. These range from anywhere from about 21,750 to about 153,000 square feet. You'll find other pages in the pattern book. The proposed project will be built in three phases. You can see that, as well as the architectural characteristics as well. Proposed uses are listed on page eight. Industrial uses are to include only those allowed by right under the light industrial and transport and warehousing activity classifications. The pattern book will also note that Building I, which is the northernmost building closest to the residential areas, shall prohibit uses that create any kind of banging, pounding, disruptive noises such as automotive repairs or services as part of their daily operations. This development does have two primary access points to Manchester Pike. The applicant did complete a traffic study, which was reviewed by our traffic consultant. It did recommend turn lanes for both access drives with a new traffic signal at the entrance across from Warming Field Drive. If there are additional access points that are required due to the development of the commercial portion, we can require traffic studies at that time, but for now, what we know of is more of a definitive type use are those industrial buildings in the back, so that's what the traffic study was based on. Of course, an engineered plan would have to be submitted prior to any development of this site. A type-three buffer would be required between industrially and residentially-zoned properties. Those buffers are shown appropriately on the concept plans, and, again, they would have to show all of that on a, on an engineered site plan, and, of course, our performance standards would also apply. Some of the planning commissioners during and after the public hearing expressed some concerns about the appropriateness of this development in the area and also the traffic along Manchester Pike. Following the public hearing, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the application, adding a provision that the roll-up doors for Building I, again, that's that northernmost building, be flipped to the other side, which is the south side, so as not to disturb the neighboring residential properties. So following discussion, the Planning Commission did recommend approval with those added provisions by a vote of five for and three against, and, as always, I'm available to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Commissioner James? Commissioner Oliver?
Yes. The recommendation about moving the roll-up door, you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Do they have to abide by that?
Yes, that's part of the pattern book, so, yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing open for rezoning request REZ 25-005. Swanson Development located along Manchester Pike. The existing zoning is residential medium density. The proposed zoning is planned unit development for industrial uses and commercial general. The size of the site is approximately 105 acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Beverly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to note to Commissioner Oliver's point, those roll-up doors were also a source from the neighborhood meeting, and some of the adjustments the developer was open to, along with landscape buffering to not disturb quality of life, so it was welcome to see that, but, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve with staff comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve rezoning request REZ 25-005. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Commissioner, Mr. Demossi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one final item, just a quick reminder about the public hearing for Plan Rutherford before the Planning Commission. It'll be on June 23rd, 6 o'clock in this room, so just wanted to make sure everybody kept that on their radar. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demossi, and I'll follow up with that. This public hearing out of, with the Planning Commission comes following several years of community meetings to develop this plan. Please pay attention. Getting back to our agenda, as we said earlier, Item I has been pulled. Item K, there are zero public comments. Item L, elections and confirmations. Steering Vice Chair, Commissioner Pettish Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Elections and confirmations. Item 1, selection of notaries. Commissioners, listing of the notaries may be found on your iPad. Mr. Chairman, I move to confirm the election of these individuals as Rutherford County notaries.
We have a motion and a second to approve the list of notaries. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries.
Item 2, steering would like to announce one vacancy on the Juvenile Detention Board of Commissioners. This is a two-year term. The current term ends August 2025. Item 3, steering would like to also announce three vacancies on the Industrial Development and Health and Education Facilities Board. There is one seat to fill, a retiring member's seat of whose term, which ends August 2027, and there are two seats available for six-year terms for August 2025 through August 2027. Item 4, steering wishes to announce one vacancy on the Lineball Library Board to fill a retiring member's vacancy. The term ends August 2026. Item 5, steering wishes to confirm the reappointment of Joanna Medlin to the CCRC Board of Directors. This is a three-year term, July 2025 through July 2028. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to approve Joanne Medlin to the CCR Board. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Congratulations to Ms. Medlin.
Item 6, we also wish to confirm Ruth Belt and Beth Dunfield to the Lineball Library Board. This will be a three-year term, beginning June 2025 and continuing until June 2028. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve two people to the Lineball Library Board, Ms. Belt and Ms. Dunfield. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Congratulations, Ms. Belt and Ms. Dunfield.
Item 7, we'd like to confirm the reappointment of William Cope to the Juvenile Detention Board of Commissioners. This is a two-year term, beginning August 2025, continuing until August 2027. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Congratulations to Mr. Cope.
Aye. Item 8, steering would like to confirm the reappointment of Anita Heron to the Juvenile Detention Board of Commissioners. It is a two-year term, beginning August 2025, continuing until August 2027. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to reappoint Ms. Heron to the Juvenile Detention Board. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Heron.
Item 9, and we wish to confirm Rhonda Campbell, John Wiggers, Darwin Keller, and Kristy Wells as juvenile commissioners, each for four-year terms. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second to appoint four new judicial commissioners. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion, any opposed? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Thank you, and we appreciate those that are willing to serve as judicial commissioners, and thank you, Commissioner Reed. Item M, resolution to approve the consent agenda. Our Chairman, Pro Tem Trey Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those items have been reviewed. There is no request to pull anything. My motion is to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? For this, commissioners will be on the board. If you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
19 yes, 1 no.
Motion to approve the consent agenda carries. Thank you. That gets us to, no unfinished business. It gets us to Item P, report of our standing committees. Up first is Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee Chairman Robert P.
Good evening. We have one resolution to consider, Budget Item A, whereas the Child Advocacy Center has requested a capital campaign contribution in the amount of $1 million to be used for the purchase of a building to house the operations of the Child Advocacy Center, and whereas Rutherford County desires to set aside these funds requested by the Child Advocacy Center by moving the funds from the General Fund Unassigned Fund Balance Account to the General Fund Committed Fund Balance Account, and whereas should the Child Advocacy Center request appropriation of these funds during the 2025-26 budget year, the Child Advocacy Center shall make a request through the County Commission Committee process, and prior to said funds being appropriated, attain approval by majority of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners for such appropriation. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the funds in the amount of $1 million be set aside for the purchase of a building to house the operations of the Child Advocacy Center, and be it further resolved that the General Fund be amended as follows to fund the building purchase. A decrease in unassigned fund balance of $1 million, an increase for child committed fund balance of $1 million. Be it further resolved that nothing herein shall prohibit the County, Rutherford County Board of Commissioners from moving the funds back to General Fund Unassigned Fund Balance Account at some other fund for use for some other purpose. Resolve this 12th day of June 2025. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner James.
Can I get a little help in understanding some of this? I watched on budget, and I can respect their mission, so I don't want to mix them up. I respect their mission, and I greatly appreciate the missions they have. I'm just concerned, because I remember watching in the meeting mentioning that we're setting a president or the potential of setting a president here, and then the very next topic that came up, I believe it was the Smirner Senior Center, came up and asked for some funds for their capital projects, and it's such a large ask, I just want to do a little bit more due diligence on this, at least for my own peace of mind. So if somebody could help me explain this to me, without the emotional side of their mission, which I greatly respect, and we all do, but the idea of such a large sum. For example, what is the, what is the percentage that we give to the nonprofits around the county? And maybe Michael can answer that. What is the overall number that, the percentage base that we're supposed to require to, the state requires us to give back? And then how does this chunk help or hurt within that ability?
Speaking for myself, and I'll start if that's okay.
Yes.
I know how to say no. You know, that's the bottom line. I think all 21 of us know how to say no. One thing that I will point out is this agency, like many of the nonprofit agencies, do work for the county. That is required by the state. You know, that's bottom line right there. You know, there's a requirement for us to do this, and they, it's basically an unfounded mandate handed down from the state. Now, we can elaborate on that all you want to, but that's the bottom line for me. Michael or anybody else that'd like to make a statement.
So there is no financial requirement from the county on any of our nonprofit funds. However, if we give them, there are, we do have strings attached to our money that goes out. The one requirement is, depending on whether you're a civic or nonprofit, depends on how we advertise and give those funds out, but there's no requirement to continue to fund nonprofit organizations. If we do fund them, there's a requirement of the reports they have to file and the documents they file with our office, but there's no, no set percentage by the state, to answer your question.
I guess part of what concerns me, excuse me, part of what's got me kind of held up was, if I remember correctly, they made the comment that they've been fundraising for their capital projects for about a year, give or take, and they've only raised $70,000 so far, and are, we're giving the bulk of them to go forward, and that's, I'm not, I'm not arguing it, I'm just trying to get clarity, get understanding for my own peace of mind to understand that, and just want somebody who is maybe one of you on budget who had that back and forth and can kind of give me some of that clarity to help justify for me.
One other thing that I can mention, and the director mentioned it the other night and corrected it, they've procured funding from one of the local lenders, one of the banks, so that they could go ahead with this. Of course, they, we were one of the first asked as far as their request for money. So that's, that's one of the other things. Why are we the one? Well, we just happened to be first that they came to, and it happened during our budget process where we are normally giving money to our nonprofits. I understand that this is larger than what we normally see, but this is something, too. If you notice, this will not affect our tax rate this year. This is not coming out of our budget unless, you know, they advocate or come and ask for the money this year. It's in our accounts. It is drawing interest on our accounts, not theirs. It will remain in our money, in our accounts, in, I forget the exact name of it, but it is a restricted account, so the money is available when they need it, but it is still drawing interest for us in the county, and if they did not ask for it, we can easily move this back into unassigned fund balance. Michael, you want to elaborate on that? That's pretty well covered it, I think.
Do you have any kind of, or did y'all set any kind of parameters on it? Kind of like, we'll give you up to $1 million as to equal what you raise versus?
That's not part of this resolution, sir.
Just note, no parameters on that? Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's not part of this resolution.
Mr. Chair? Yes. Commissioner Johnson.
Clarification, this is a $7 million project or better. A million dollars is not a bulk of the amount that's going to be raised. Furthermore, we always hear of the most vulnerable groups of people. Well, you've got the abused children. I'd say they probably come in in the top three categories. You've got the children, you've got the elderly, which is senior, you've got the women. I don't know how to, I don't know how they're classified, but to me, they're all, one's not any more important than the other, and I would support all three of these, but tonight, we're talking about children's advocacy. I fully support that. I think many of us went over there and toured the facility and have been over there at least once or twice, and we know what least once or twice, and we know what's going on over there, and we appreciate what they're doing, but this is required. So, I mean, I appreciate them going out on a limb and doing it on their own, and then coming and asking us for assistance, rather than just having it dumped on us, and I believe that's what would happen if we didn't have them. They do a tremendous job, and I don't have any question or concern about fulfilling their need for this million dollars.
There's no doubt that they do a tremendous job, and that they're a valuable tool and asset for the county and for the people of the county. Like I started this with, I didn't want the emotional side of the topic, I just wanted to see the logical, the numbers, get a grasp around, because it is a big number and a big ask. If I willingly and had the money, diligently had the money, able to go to go out there, I would personally want to give them the full, although I thought it was 2.4 million, that I remember them quoting, not seven, but it feels like, though, it's the potential of essentially almost a giveaway for something when we don't see any steps or parameters with that. But I definitely respect what they're doing and their ask, there's no question on that. I'm not calling that for anybody. I just wanted to get a better, firmer foundation of the amount, the figure that's coming, that
Other questions? Michael, do you have something?
I want to clarify something. Tonight, we are not spending $1 million. All this does is set it in a committed fund balance account. So you mentioned maybe some restrictions that you had questions about or stuff. Any of those can be placed on it when they come back through the committee process. So the way this would work is they'll come back to budget and say, hey, we've found a building that we want to buy, or whatever. At that time, they'll be able to tell you whether they got a loan, or whether they have other donors. So tonight, you're not appropriating any money. You are, we're just setting aside $1 million in a committed fund balance account. There will be a vote taken in the future when they come back to us to actually appropriate that money, and then at that time, there could be amendments placed on that, there could be none, you know, y'all could do as you wish at that time, depending on the information they bring to you. But I just want to clarify, there's no appropriation tonight of spending the million dollars.
Thank you. That's why I wanted some more clarity of the fact that when they are ready to come back, they come back to the committee to release chunks or the whole plot. That's what I, I just didn't want to, I guess I was hung up on during the budget meeting when they came in, and I forget who it was, made the comment that if you don't raise the full amount, what happens? And they go, we just keep it. They argue they never fail, they never not succeed, which is a great ability, but there's always that first chance, and so I was just overly cautious, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Just if I could add one thing, the existence of a child advocacy center is dictated by the state. The funding of that center is on the taxpayers of Rutherford County. The services that the Child Advocacy Center provides are unmentionable. There is no way to put a price tag on what these people do, and if you are able to visit that center, you would see that they are incapable of providing the services in that center. This seed money, this potential seed money, opens up the door for other organizations that are willing to make a contribution depending upon the commitment of Rutherford County to support that center. There is, I will not say that there's not more, a more pressing, urgent need, but this need is urgent, in my opinion, and the people that it serves is actually high on our list of service. So there's nothing that we can, cannot do to support those individuals that really need this. So it's money well spent, that's my two cents worth. Any other questions? For this, commissioners will be on the board, so if you would, please cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
Twenty yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our regular business, but if you'll indulge me for a moment, I have an announcement I'd like to make. Our finance director, Michael Smith, has been working diligently for the last several months to help us secure a second AAA bond rating. Fitch just announced yesterday that we have received a AAA bond rating from them. That is in addition to the Moody's AAA bond rating that we currently have. We will hear from S&amp;P in a couple of weeks, but Michael, have you got anything you'd like to say about it?
Yeah, I'm very happy to announce that. I know it's not really flashy, but that's a big deal for us, and you know, kind of in the, as far as for the finance world, I mean, we're really happy with that. I'm still doing some research to see if there's any, there's one other county I know in Tennessee that has multiple AAA ratings. I think we're the second, but I have, I'm still trying to make sure before I say that officially, but there's very few. The only other one I'm aware of right now is Hamilton. So this is a really big deal for us, so now we have two AAA ratings, and we have yet to get S&amp;P's rating on this latest bond issue. So I mean, there's a chance that we could have three, and that we would be the only second county in the state, I believe, that would have that, so that's a really big deal. We've been working really hard on that, and so we're just really excited for, to have that. It should save us, and has, will continue to save us quite a bit of money on our bonds, bond issuance, and our refunding, but you know, just wanted to announce that tonight.
Outstanding.
I want to point out, in our recent budget meetings, the budget committee unanimously voted to give our finance director a salary increase, and that was after looking at other agencies in this state that do similar work. Now, most of the counties surrounding us do not have the same jobs that Michael's got. For instance, they don't do the payroll for their school systems. The ones that we, the agencies that we looked at are agencies that were basically apples to apples and oranges to oranges. So that's why the recommendation was made, and personally, I think it was well deserved.
I'd like to add to that, that it wasn't just the salary increase, it was a promotion, and the salary increase went with the promotion. Good job, Michael. Thank you.
Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to add to that as well, since it's being brought up tonight, but obviously, job well done. That's going to save us tremendous amount of money with this additional AAA bond rating. Commissioner Johnson, I actually attended a CTAAS class that was on county budgeting. Was it about a year ago? We only know what our finance director brings to the table, which I keep finding out is tremendously above and beyond the average county finance director. So at CTAAS, and it was their entire budget team was saying to the class, one of the things that could save you money, but you better be real careful about, is refunding bonds. Most counties get in more trouble trying to refund bonds incorrectly than to just stay away from it. So our recommendation is, if your finance directors, which is the majority, do not understand them, to not do them. Now, Anthony and I looked at each other, because we had already done our first bond refunding, saving millions of dollars, and we've now done even more than that. So I just wanted to share that story, that Director Smith, in addition to answering any questions I've ever had, which are numerous and long, and usually when he's on vacation, but he's been accessible, he's been quick to answer any and all questions this commissioner's ever had, and I applaud the budget committee for making a great choice. Our finance director is, I consider, the best in the state of Tennessee.
Mr. Chairman, just to add to that, Michael is shy when it comes to things like this, and for us to talk about an individual's salary in public is something that makes his eyes kind of a little bit teary, and also a little bit, he's a little bashful, but everything that's happened over the last few months is well deserved, and it is a tribute to Rutherford County that we have the type of employees that were recognized tonight, including Superintendent Brooks. But right now, we're talking about Michael Smith, and I can't tell you how much we, as a commission, appreciate your services. Michael, thank you.
I just want to add one thing. I think this could not be done. I think it's a combination of effort between not just my department, the commission, the mayor's office, and all the department heads, too. I mean, when we meet for the budget process, you know, all of this is in mind, you know, working with the schools, you know, with Dr. Sullivan and his team, with Greg and his team, the mayor, and all the department heads. So this is really a group effort between the commission, all the component units of the county that we do, and you know, whether that be the airport authority, all of that plays into this bucket. So I couldn't have done it by myself. I want to thank the finance department as well, because they make my job a lot easier, so just wanted to tell thanks to them.
Thank you, Michael.
And that was something I definitely wanted to add. It wouldn't happen without you 20 people added to this, and our mayor. I will mention that our next regular meeting is June 17th. Excuse me, I'm reading the wrong date there. It's August the 7th is our next regular meeting. Our next budget meeting is the public hearing, and that's on June the 17th at 7:00. I would encourage all the commissioners that would like to, please attend. The next night, on June 18th, we will review and preview our budget, which we will be sending to the full commission on June the 23rd, where we meet at 9:00 o'clock here in this chamber. That concludes our business night. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman P. Item P2, Public Safety, Chairman Pettis Reed.
Mr. Chairman, I do not have anything to report, but our next meeting will be next Monday night, June 16th at 5:30 here in this room.
Thank you. Item P3, Health and Education Committee Chairman Phil Dodd.
Thank you, Chairman. Our next meeting, take note, is on an off night. We're meeting June the 17th, the same night as the public hearing, but we will be meeting at 5:00, 5:00 p.m. in these chambers. Our only item on the agenda is to hear the cleanup budget for the school system.
Thank you. Item P4, Property Management Committee Chairman Alan McAdoo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing to report tonight. Our next meeting will be Thursday, July 31st at 5:30 p.m. I know on your agenda is saying Wednesday, but that's a typo. It's Thursday, Thursday, July 31st, 5:30.
Thank you, Chairman McAdoo. Item P5, Public Works and Planning Committee Chairman Anthony Johnson.
Thank you, Chairman Phillips. I'd like to announce that on June 17th at 1:00 at Landfield Road, we'll be opening our transfer station. We'll have the ribbon cutting. I'd like for everyone to come out. See it, it'll be good and clean at that time, but please don't go out there in sightsee after that night or day, because you'll probably get run over. It's going to be a busy place, but it's a huge step, opening this station towards the future of our solid waste operations. So it's a big step forward, and we're proud to do that. Also, our next meeting was advertised on the agenda tonight as Tuesday, July 16th. It's actually Wednesday, July 16th at 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Item P6, Steering Legislative and Governmental Committee Chairman Craig Harris.
Commissioners, I only have one thing. We have a lobbyist contract that we have redone. I have had a productive meeting with the mayor. We agreed on this contract, and what I wanted to show you, I didn't have enough carries, but this is what I'm going to give y'all, each, every one of y'all. It is a list of all the bills that are associated, that are going through the state, but are dealing with Rutherford County. So the way this is going to start working is, you look at this, what I give you, you see what you're interested in, and then the lobbyists and me and the mayor will tell you what it is. You know, sometimes it's just an amendment, sometimes it's a bill that's not going anywhere, but we will tell you everything that's in this bill and where it goes. And then if you still want to pursue it, then you can come through the steering committee, and you can bring forth this, why you want to do this, and then we will vote on this, the county commission as a whole, and then we will instruct our lobbyists to work on it. So I want to be more transparent, I want us to be more involved, and I want us to understand what's going on so that we can work together. And the only thing on this, and I don't, I will read this, and it doesn't tell you, but sometimes in the legislation, there is, during about the 30 days, there's a lot of movement going on. There's amendments, there's all kinds of deals, and sometimes we can't get to the steering committee, because we only meet once a month. So during that time, me and the mayor have agreed that we'll be on call, and that we will make decisions on how we stand on that, then we'll come to steering, and if we cannot agree, me and the mayor cannot agree on something, then we'll come to the steering, present it both, and then y'all decide on what we do. So, whereas Rutherford County previously hired lobbyist Will Denami to assist Rutherford County with lobbying efforts from July 1st to June 10th, June, I'm sorry, June 30th of 2025. Whereas, Rutherford County believes it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County to renew its agreement with lobbyist Will Denami to represent and assist Rutherford County with lobbying services from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2027, as reflected in the agreement attached heretofore as exhibited and incorporated herein by the reference as LE copy herein verbatim. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the agreement attached shall be and hereby is approved, and further that the county mayor shall be and hereby is authorized to execute the same. Resolve this 12th day of June 2025. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution of lobbyist contract. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Oliver.
Yes, I have a question. On the attached document for, number four, compensation, it says in consideration services described, and it says pay consultant a fee of $200,000 during the initial term. Can you expand upon that, or why does that?
Commissioner Oliver, it's $200,000 over two years. So we paid, we paid $100,000 last year, and we're still paying, we didn't go up, but it's for two, that 200,000 is for two years.
Okay, and so the initial term, because we're in essence rehiring him, correct?
Yeah, we're, yes, ma'am. We redid the entire contract, so it's.
So this additional term that we're getting ready to do is still going to be at the same rate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Yes, sir. Commissioner, Chairman pro tem Trey Gooch.
Chairman Harris, that packet of bills that you have, surely that's going to change and more will be added. How would you disseminate that information to us?
What I'm going to do is, I'm going to give you a packet of every bill, and then I'm going to give you time for y'all to look at it, go through it, see what you want, and then bring your questions to the steering, and then we'll discuss that, and then if we want to pursue it, the steering and the county commission will vote, and then give authorization to the lobbyists to pursue what you want.
Well, I think, but as more bills and legislation is added from the legislature, how would that come to us?
It'll come through steering.
I guess you'll update us some more.
Yeah, you're going to have an update, but the lobbyist is going to give a report every single month. He continues to do that. And he also will have a written report, so we'll be able to send that out to all y'all as well.
Other questions? We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's money, I'm sorry, this is money. We need to be on the board. Thank you. So if you would, please cast your vote, and thank you, Nick, for correcting me.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote.
20 yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Also, Mr. Chairman, I have a, on my agenda for the mineral service tax, we need to go through budget on this, so we're going to go to the next budget meeting, and then we're going to, on our June 23rd meeting, we'll ratify it. July 1st, we'll start collecting money. So we should be able to do that and not be a problem.
Item 6B has been pulled.
And my next steering meeting is August 4th. We're not meeting in July.
Thank you, Chairman Harris. That concludes our agenda with the exception of our executive session. Before we get into executive session, I'd like to go ahead and complete our shout-outs and comments that we have because we will not be in the mood to do that after our executive session. So I'll go ahead and entertain any announcements or shout-outs that we'd like to do at this time.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Murray.
Yes, sir. I would like to announce for the Black Men Community Center for District 19, after a five-year hiatus, we are finally bringing back the Black Men BBQ. That's going to be on June the 27th at 5:30. So we would like to see as many people out there as possible. So we're gearing up. This is a trial. So for next year, we're going to expect to have a big one because we hope, the Black, oh, I'm sorry, the Lane Agro Center. So June 27th at 5:30. So see me. I want everybody to buy a ticket, or two, or three. No, I'm joking. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Reed.
Mr. Chairman, we're always glad to see that we have individuals within our public safety that are willing to go the extra mile and to do extra training to do a little bit better. In our ambulance area, we have four paramedics that have been promoted to Paramedic II, which is a whole lot of training that they're doing on, they do that themselves. They're not required to do this, but this means they're doing so much more for the citizens of Rutherford County. And these four paramedics are Allison Engel, Matt Dagoo, Scott Overhold, and Keith Edel, Edel. And I think they deserve a round of applause for this extra effort they've done.
Agreed. Thank you, Chairman Reed. Anyone else?
Chairman, I have a quick one?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Wilson.
Just a big shout-out to Mr. Evan Lester and the Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority on pulling off the great airshow in Smyrna. A lot of people don't realize this, so I just want to be sure we said this publicly. Much like the Smyrna Rotary Club's Fish Fry, which incidentally did win the best nonprofit event in Rutherford County at the Main Street Awards recently, it's the exact model. After the basic expenses are paid of just putting on the event, all proceeds are given to charity. So the Fish Fry for Rotary that comes up in September, as well as this airshow, the proceeds, that is a charitable event, and I just think people need to know that we're a part of that airport here in Rutherford County. So what a great event pulled off. A lot of charities are going to get help from that, and they did a wonderful job, and we'll do it again next year.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Anyone else? Seeing none, at this time, we will clear the courtroom for our executive session, and commissioners, you can take five before we get into our executive session. This time, I'll declare the county commission back in session. Quick announcement, we have been in executive session with our county attorney about an ongoing legal matter. There was no discussion that related to a decision, that led to a decision, or we did not go into any deliberations. With that, we have reached the end of our agenda. Anyone have an announcement? Once again, this commissioner would like to thank you for your attendance and your participation tonight. It's meaningful to the citizens of Rutherford County. With that, we, let me go ahead and announce that our next meeting will be Monday, 9:00 AM, the 23rd of June, here in this room. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.